And I'll call the meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen, June 3rd, 2020 via Zoom while it's not on our agenda tonight. If you'd all please rise or show some type of respect and we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America.
Which stands one day under God.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start, although this might feel awkward, again, we're in a Zoom meeting, if we could all have a moment of silence for all the unrest in this country to meditate or pray for peace in our nation and tolerance. Thank you. Are there any additional agenda or consent items this evening? We'll go to delegations. I will hit the unmute all button so anybody on the call that thinks they're muted are about to not be muted. So, but, but some people stay muted. I don't know how that works. I guess you physically can mute yourself. Would anyone like to speak at public delegation this evening? All the comments, anyone like to speak to the Board of Selectmen this evening on general issues? Okay. If not, and seeing none, the approval of the minutes, a regular meeting of 20, May 20.
This is Kevin Siri, and I move to approve the regular meeting minutes of May 20, 2020, as submitted.
Dan Cunningham, I'll second the motion.
Thank you, guys are getting really good at that. Any comments, corrections?
I have a comment or question regarding, I think it's paragraph 7A. It reads that me and the town will need an additional 2.1 million to finish the $1 million project. Has already been approved by the town at referendum. The referendum was for 5 million, right?
Right.
Approved 6, so it didn't, 1 million wasn't approved by referendum, it was approved by Board of Selectmen? As I recollect. So 5 million was approved at referendum, I believe. Based on Board of Finance reducing our 6 million to 5 million.
Okay.
Referendum did follow the Board of Finance action, correct?
Correct. We approved 6, they moved it down to 5 and said, "Come back and ask for more money with more detail," and that's where we're at now, so.
So I think it should re, had already been approved by the Board of Selectmen in scratch at referendum.
This is Kevin Siri, I'll come through with that modification.
Okay. Who seconded that?
Paul Dago second.
Paul Dago originally, okay. Great. With an amendment, is there any other changes? Okay, the motion had been amended to improve or correct the minutes of the meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Nice talking. Consent calendar.
Kevin Siri, and I move to approve the consent calendar for the meeting of June 3rd, 2020, in the amount of $435.31.
Mark Salerno, I second.
Motion and second. Any further comments or corrections? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain? Old business, the discussion of possible action of the Viscera Ordinance Amendment. We heard the public hearing this evening. There were no comments from the public. This is more of an administrative change in the ordinance, but we thought it prudent and certainly conservative to go ahead and go through the process of the public hearing. There was some discussion about not needing to do that because of, because of the change. But we went ahead and did that across all our teams. If we go the right way. Are there any comments, suggestions?
I'll, this is Kevin Siri, I'll move to adopt the amendments as presented to an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Regulating the Storage, Collection, and Disposal of Solid Waste and Providing for a System of Refuse, Collection, and Disposal and the Administration thereof." The amendments will be effective upon publication of notice of their adoption in accordance with the Governor's executive orders.
Mark Salerno, second.
Thank you, Kevin and Mark. Any comments or questions this evening? Hearing, seeing none, with a motion on the table, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain? So unanimous vote, 6-0. This evening on our new business, you've noticed we had a rather significant package arrive that we, this is that meeting every year where we've gone through the budget process and how the dispersment, the acquisition plan, the appropriations of different items that were in the budget now have to be appropriated. And we're going to go through that. A lot of the items we'll hear tonight, we've already seen during the budget process, we already talked about a lot of these things. But we'll review all of them and solicit, ask for your approval to move on to the Board of Finance for their approval as well. The first one is the acquisition program of $1,772,825. That's item 7A in our agenda. And, well, what do we got here?
If you want to get the resolution out and then discuss it? Mark?
Sure.
Okay. This will be a long one, as everyone has been indicated, this is three pages and I have been told I have to read all of it, so.
Is that right?
This is for the acquisition, so. Resolution of the Town of East Lime, Connecticut authorizing the execution and delivery of an equipment lease purchase agreement and schedules thereto for the acquisition, purchase, financing, and leasing of certain equipment. Whereas the Town of East Lime, Connecticut, the town, a political subdivision of the state of Connecticut, the state, is authorized by the laws of the state to purchase, acquire, and lease personal property, tangible and intangible, for the benefit of the town and its inhabitants and to enter into contracts with respects thereto. And whereas the Board of Selectmen of the town, the board, has determined that a need exists for the acquisition of certain vehicles and equipment for various departments throughout the town as set forth in Schedule A heretofore at a cost of not to exceed $1,772,825 collectively, the equipment, on the terms herein provided. And whereas, in order to acquire such equipment, the town proposes to enter into an equipment lease purchase agreement, including schedules and attachments thereto. The agreement was a lesser to be determined by a competitive bid process, the lesser. And whereas, the board deems it for the benefit of the town and for the efficient and effective administration thereto, to enter into the agreement for the purchase, acquisition, financing, and leasing of the equipment to be therein described on the terms and conditions herein provided. Now therefore, be it, and it is hereby resolved by the board as follows. Section 1, Findings and Determinations. It is hereby found and determined that entering into the agreement is in the best interest of the town for the acquisition, purchase, financing, and leasing of the equipment pursuant to Executive Order 7S, Section 7, Adoption of this resolution to finance the equipment, which includes laptops and iPads for teachers and students, remote learning is necessary to permit the orderly operation of the town, and that there is a need to act immediately and during the duration of the public health and civil preparedness emergency declared by the governor in order to avoid endangering public health and welfare, prevent significant financial loss, or is otherwise necessary for the protection of persons and property within the town. Two, Appointment of Lesser. This first selectman, patient with the Director of Finance is authorized to appoint the lesser after a competitive bid process to select the lowest financing cost from a qualified leasing company. Section 3, Approval of Documents. The first selectman is authorized to determine the form, terms, and provisions of the agreement, including the form of any schedule of leased property and rental payments thereto, provided, however, that the purchase price of the equipment shall not exceed $1,772,825, including financing costs. The terms of the agreement shall not exceed five years, and the interest rate included in the lease payments shall not exceed 1.48%. The first selectman is further authorized to sign and deliver on behalf of the town the agreement. Any property scheduled, any rental payment schedule attached thereto, and any related exhibits attached thereto, if and when required. Section 4, Rent Payments. Any rent payments required under the agreement shall be appropriated in the town's annual budget. Five, Other Actions Authorized. The officers and employees of the town shall take all action necessary or reasonably required by the parties to the agreement to carry out, give effect to, and consummate the transactions completed, contemplated thereby. The first selectman is authorized to approve and execute and deliver any additional instruments and documents in connection with the agreement, including but not limited to acceptance certificates, escrow agreements, tax certificates, investment agreements, and UCC financing statements creating a security interest in the equipment in favor of the lesser, and to take all action necessary in conformity therewith, including without limitation, the execution, delivery of any closing and other documents required to be delivered in connection with the agreement. Section 6, No General Liability. Nothing contained in this resolution, the agreement, any escrow agreement, nor any other instrument shall be construed with respect to the town as incurring a liability or charge upon the general credit of the town or against its taxing power, nor shall the breach of any agreement contained in this resolution, the agreement, any escrow agreement, or any other instrument or document executing connection therewith impose any pecuniary liability upon the town or any charge upon its general credit or against its taxing power, except to the extent that any rental payments payable under the agreement are limited obligations of the town, subject to annual appropriation as defined, as provided in the agreement. Section 7, Appointment of Authorized Town Representative. The first selectman and the Director of Finance of the town are hereby designated to act as authorized representatives of the town for purposes of the agreement and other documents executing connection with the agreement until such time as the governing body of the town shall designate any other or different authorized representative for such purposes. Section 8, Declaration of Official Intent. The town hereby expresses its official intent pursuant to Section 1.150-2 of the Federal Income Tax Regulations, Title 26, the regulation, to reimburse expenditures paid 60 days prior to and any time after the date of passage of the resolution and the maximum amount of the equipment with the proceeds of bonds, notes, tax exempted leases, or other obligations, tax exempt obligations, not later than 18 months after the later of the date of the expenditure or the substantial completion of the equipment, or such later date, the regulations may authorize. The town hereby certifies that the intention of, the intention to reimburse as expressed herein is based upon its reasonable expectations as of the date. Their Director of Finance or her designee is hereby authorized to pay equipment expenses in accordance herewith pending the issuance of the tax exempt obligation. Section 9, Severability. If any section, paragraph, clause, or provision of this resolution shall for any reason be held to be invalid or unenforceable, the invalidity or unenforceability of such action, paragraph, clause, or provision shall not affect any other remaining provisions of this resolution. Effective date, this resolution shall be effective immediately upon its approval and adoption.
This is Mark, second.
You don't want to repeat all that, Mr. Salerno?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Maybe it's because we're, we call always having to read both names, but. You doing all right, Dan?
Yeah, I was just adjusting my camera a little bit.
You're perfectly framed.
No, I want to get that lighting, that's right.
Let's talk, let's talk about the, the resolution here, the lease purchase agreement. Joe, are you giving us details tonight, or is Anna?
So I'm.
Down in the Board of.
Anna Johnson.
Yes.
So this is, we have bundled all of the equipment in, you know, one deal. It includes Public Works Road Sweeper, a replacement of a pickup truck with equipment, and two marked police vehicles, as well as the laptops and iPads for all of the schools and the teachers. You'll notice that in the resolution in Section 1, there was a paragraph relative to findings and findings and determination. Per the Executive Order, since the cost of all of the laptops and the iPads exceeds 1% of our current budget, the boards are required to make that determination in order to move forward with this lease obligation.
Right.
So I just wanted to point that out to the board. So typically, we would have Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, and then a town meeting. So under the current Executive Order, we're unable to have a town meeting. So the appropriation is approved after Board of Finance approval. One thing we will be doing is typically when we have a town meeting, we publish in the newspaper the call of the town meeting. So we're going to publish it, publish it as the Board of Finance meeting, since that's like, in theory, the final step in the process. The Public Works equipment, Joe Burgoyd's here, so he would be, better be able to articulate the needs on those.
Hey, Mark, it's Kevin. Really quick, I just got a text from someone, said they've been trying to get on and can't. The phone number is obviously 860, it's 705-7101. I don't know if that's the number you've got trying to get in. 705-7101.
That person may have already been let in, because there's nobody in the waiting room right now.
Okay, yep, they just texted me they're in. Okay.
Um, okay. These are all these items, so we have the sweeper, the pickup truck for Public Works. We wrote this down. Two police cars, obviously, those get paid out of the police revolving fund. They collect money from all their outside overtime work, and they pay for their own police cars, but this is part of the process. And then the laptops and iPads, and if you were paying attention to the budget process, you know they're trying to put a device in the hands of every student in our school system, which these days is standard operating procedure. Are there any questions in the Board of Selectmen?
So just, this is Mark Salerno, just a clarification. So this is, this money's been allocated for next year's budget, right? The payments?
Yeah.
It was just approved.
Anna Johnson, yes, that's correct. The, there's, the Public Works equipment is in the town's general fund budget. The Board of Education items are included in the Board of Education budget, and then the police vehicles are going to be paid out of a C N R E fund, the fees from the outside police jobs.
Okay. And one, one final question. Is there any supply issues with the laptops and the iPads? I assume a lot of school systems are in the same boat.
So there are representatives from the Board of Education that could speak to that, Amy Drone or Mariana Stevens?
Sure. I, I can, I can speak to that, Amy Drone from the Board of Ed. So as far as supplies, we're basically getting an estimate of we're anywhere from five to seven weeks out from order, which is why Anna's been great and working with us, and I'm sort of keeping her as far as supply and demand. We're noticing a change in that shipping window about every two weeks. It's bumping out another week. Yeah.
Okay. Well, five to seven weeks, that's good. Thank you.
You did. The same thing happens, Mr. Salerno, with, for example, the police cars, because every community is coming up on their fiscal year and they're all ordering a couple of police cars. And we found that if we waited just a month, which we did a couple of years ago by request to the Board of Finance, it added about four or five months into the delivery. So this is why we do this now in June, to ready ourselves for the July 1st purchases and appropriations. So same thing is happening, as you see with the, with the school system, that, you know, every, every week it's bumping out two more. So this is why we're doing it tonight. It's a good, a great example. Any other questions on the items this evening and the special appropriation?
Yes. Roseanne?
Hi, Roseanne.
All right. On the special appropriation for the Police Department, for the CAD, I noticed that there's an annual fee on top of the $169,000. Is that, am I reading that correctly for that, as a, the Nexen contract, says an annual fee of $17,200? So is that every year?
Anna Johnson, Roseanne, that's, that item is later on the agenda.
So, all right. All right, I'm sorry, I thought that was under the acquisition.
Yeah, but it's, it's a special appropriate, no, it's not under the acquisition program, which is this big, we're grouping a bunch of things together, and I think, correct me if I'm wrong, it's, it's kind of a big lease payment, all of this together, and we'll pay this off over five years, Anna?
Yeah, so the, the item that Ms. Hardy was inquiring on is item number C. We're on item number A right now.
So.
All right, I'll hold off.
You got that, right? So we'll, we'll hold off on that. Any other questions about this special appropriations lease purchase agreement for We have a motion on the table, it's seconded. Any further comments?
Dan Cunningham, I do have one. On Section 3, I'm just wondering why the, the interest rate is left blank? Is there a purpose for that, or is that an oversight?
Anna Johnson, the interest rate is 1.48%.
Okay. Because there's a shall not exceed cap, but it's.
It was left blank on the resolutions when they were mailed out, however, Mr. Siri read the resolution, he, he read the rate into the record.
The rate is in the record. That was my question. Thank you.
It's good that you pointed that out, Dan, to begin to highlight that, because you folks have a first draft and then we had a final draft.
Yeah.
Yeah, so one point, tell me again what the percentage is?
1.48.
That's terrific.
Okay. Thank you.
And that is over five years? Did I, well, five years, it's a 60-month or five-year plan. Terrific. Motion and second. Any further comments?
Is this the one, is this the one that very particularly we are supposed to vote by name?
I don't think so.
All right. I know that there was one that Bond Council was very specific on, that we would all need to vote individually by name.
Can I speak? I think that the intent was to have us roll call all votes tonight during the bond. Anna, is that correct?
Well, what it was is that whenever, whenever someone speaks, they need to, Anna Johnson, whenever someone, they need to say their name before they speak. No roll call?
That's all that means. Okay. So I, again, I guess we have, any other questions? Any other comments? All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Other in the abstain? Okay. I'll record that as a 6-0-0 vote. The next item on our agenda is 7B1, the roads, special appropriation of bonding the roads. It's a $500,000. Usually we put $950,000 of repair to our roads and sidewalks every year, and we're getting caught up, and Joe's plan will show you, if you ever sit down with Joe Burgoyd, he'll show you that, yeah, it's, it's the here now, but we're catching up, and then we're going to slowly be able to bring that number down. But we asked to, to bring it down this year, given the economy and the situation out there. And frankly, I've watched the Public Works scramble, expertly scramble, for the last couple of years of getting all these roads done. And I, and I, I think a short break, a little less activity would be good for the Public Works to be able to catch up on some of the other things as well. So we have a roads special appropriation. Do you want to put a motion or a resolution on the table?
I'll, I could read it if you want, Kevin.
Yes.
Okay. First. Resolved, Section 1, the sum of $500,000 is hereby appropriated by the Town of East Lime, Connecticut, and trends the town for the rehabilitation of various town roads, including reconstruction, grinding, and overlaying, micro paving, chip ceiling, and crack ceiling, and administrative, financial, and costs of issuance related thereto. Said appropriation to be inclusive of any and all state and federal grants in aid thereof the project in trends. Section 2, to meet said appropriations, $500,000 in bonds of the town or so much thereof as shall be necessary for such purposes shall be issued, maturing not later than the maximum maturity permitted by the General Statutes of Connecticut, revision of 1958 as amended from time to time, and trends the Connecticut General Statutes. Said bonds may be issued in one or more series as determined by the first selectman in the town treasure, in the amount necessary to meet the town's share of the cost of the project, determined after considering the estimated amounts of state and federal grant in aid of the project, or the actual amounts thereof. If this is to be ascertainable and the anticipated times of the receipt of the proceeds thereof, provided that the total amount of bonds to be issued shall not be less than the amount than an amount which will provide funds sufficient with other funds available for such purpose to pay the principal of and the interest on all temporary borrowings in anticipation of the receipt of the proceeds of said bonds outstanding at the time of the issuance thereof, and to pay for the administrative, financial, legal, and other costs of issuance of such bonds. The bonds shall be in the denomination of $1,000 or the whole multiple thereof be issued in fully registered form, be executed in the name and on behalf of the town by a assembly or manual signatures of the first selectman in the town treasure, bear the town seal or the facility thereof be certified by the bank or trust company, which bank or trust company may be designated, the register or transfer agent be payable at a bank or trust company, and be approved as their legality by Robinson &amp; Cole, LLP, Attorneys at Law of Hartford, Connecticut. Bonds shall be general obligation of the town, and each of the bonds shall be recite that every requirement of law relating to its issue has been duly complied with, that such bond is within every debt and other limited prescribed by the law, and that the full faith of the credit of the town, our pledge to the payment or the principal thereof and the interest therein. The aggregate principal amount of the bonds of each series should be issued, the annual installments of principal, redemption provisions, if any, the certifying, register, and transfer agents, and hang agents, the date, time of issue, and sale, and other terms detailed and particulars of such bond, including the rates or rates of interest, shall be determined by the first selectman of the town treasure, in the best interest of the town in accordance with the Connecticut General Statutes. Section 3, pursuant to Executive Order 7S, Section 7, Adoption of the Resolution of Finance, the project is necessary to permit the orderly operation of the town, and there is a need to act immediately and during the duration of a public health and the civil preparedness emergency declared by the governor in order to avoid endangering public health and welfare, prevent significant financial loss, or is otherwise necessary for protection of persons and property within the town. Section 4, Said bonds shall be sold by the first selectman in competitive offering or by negotiation in his discretion. If sold in a competitive offering, the bonds shall be sold as not less than par in accrued interest on the basis of the lowest net or true interest caused to the town. A notice of sale or a summary thereof describing the bonds and setting forth the terms and condition of the sale shall be published at least five days in advance of the sale in a recognized publication carrying municipal bond notices and devoted primarily to financial news and the subject of the state municipal bonds. If the bonds are sold by negotiation, the purchase agreement shall be approved by signing, and signed by the first selectman of the town treasure. Section 5, The town treasurer is authorized to. Section five, the town treasurer is authorized to temp- to make temporary borrowing in anticipation of the receipt and proceeds of said bonds. Notes, notes evidencing such borrowings shall be signed by the first selectman and town treasurer, have the seal of town fixed, and be payable at the bank or trust company designated by the first selectman, be applied as to their legality by Robinson and Cole, LLP, attorneys at law of Hartford, Connecticut, and be certified by bank and trust company designated by the first selectman pursuant to section seven point, seven dash three, seven-three of the Connecticut general statutes. They shall be issued with maturity dates which comply with the provisions of the Connecticut general statutes governing the issuance of such bonds. The notes shall be general, general obligations of the town, and each of the notes shall recite that every requirement of the law relating to the issue has been duly complied with, and such note is within every debt and every limit prescribed by the law, and the full faith and credit of the town are pledged to the payment and principal thereof, and the interest therein. The net interest cost of such notes, including renewals thereof, and the expense of preparing, issuing, marketing the notes, to the extent paid from the proceeds of such renewals of said bonds shall be included at cost of the project. Upon the sale of bonds or proceeds thereof, to the extent required, shall be applied forthwith to the payment of the principal of and to the interest of such notes, then outstanding, or shall be deposited with a bank or trust company and, for such purpose. Section six, the town hereby expresses its official intent pursuant to section one point, one five zero dash two of the federal income tax regulations title twenty-six, and prins the regulations to reimburse expenditures paid sixty days prior to, and any time after the date of passage of the resolution in the maximum amount, and for the project with the proceeds of bonds, notes, and other obligations, and prins tax exempt obligations. And, and the prin, authorized to be issued by the town, the tax exempt obligations shall be issued to reimburse such expenditures not later than eighteen months after the later of the date of the expenditure of this substantial completion of the project, or such later date the regulations may authorize. The town hereby certifies that intent to reimburse or express herein is based upon unreasonable expectations as of this date. First selectman or his designee is authorized to pay project expenses in accordance with the resolution pending the issuance of tax exempt obligations. Section seven, the first selectman, director of finance, and town treasurer are hereby authorized on behalf of the town to enter into an agreement or otherwise covenant for the benefit of the bondholders to provide information on an annual or periodic basis of municipal securities rule marking board, and prins the MSRB, and to provide notices to the MSRB of the events as enumerated in the Securities and Exchange Commission Exchange Act Rule fifteen, C two dash twelve as amended, as may be necessary, appropriate, or desirable to affect the sale of the bonds and notes authorized by this resolution. Any agreements and representations to provide information to the MSRB made prior here, here to are hereby confirmed, ratified, and approved. Section eight, the first selectman of the town, or, and the town treasurer, or either them, are hereby authorized on behalf of the town to enter into any other agreements, instruments, documents, certi- and certificates, including tax and investment agreements, for the consummation of the transaction contemplated by this resolution.
Baldagel second?
Thank you.
Seconds. Let's get some discussion about this. Joe, you're, you're here, you're here patiently, do you want to just talk about your, your road programs, and where this five hundred thousand dollars would be spent?
Yeah, it's pretty much, I have a list, a list of roads that we're looking to line up. It's about looking to do some pavement surface treatments on Liberty Way, Freedom Way, Colton Road, Capitol, Industrial Park Road, Brainerd Road, North Bridebrook, Scott Road, Whistletown, Beaver Brook, and Salem Turnpike. Believe it or not, we have a little section of road up there, too, that's kind of forgotten. Just, when I did have nine hundred and fifty, I was looking to do Dean Road and Grassy Hill, but those, that, that, that was about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of work up there. So what we're trying to do is keep, keep the, the roads that are okay in decent condition, because if you sink all your roads into, if you sink all your money into the worst roads, then you don't get very far. So all these roads have been identified as they're, they're needing a surface treatment, that's what lining up to do. We're also, I also have some money in there for crack ceiling, full-depth pavement repair. If you ever been over Fairhaven Road and seen the orange barriers, the DOT inspected that, and told us we had to replace those, the, the bridge railing, and I have money in there for the sidewalk. All the work that I'm planning to do is eight hundred and forty thousand, but I add the five hundred that we're looking for the bonding, plus the three hundred and forty we get for town aid roads. So that's, that's where, that's how I come up with the number.
Thank you, Joe, you just recently finished a bunch of sidewalk projects in town, too, right?
Yeah, that, that was, that was still with nineteen and twenties money, but we did the sidewalk down at McCook's, all the, the section right up against the fence there, we're, we're going down Columbus Ave. We made that connection up by the high school, I think, I see Jeff was on there, but we finished that connection over by Subway, as you, the, the students cross from the high school and walk down the road, and there was about two hundred and fif- two hundred and twenty feet that, there was nothing there. We're still looking to do the sidewalk on Dela Lane, going up the hill to Giant's Neck Heights. That, that's in this year's funds, and we're looking to continue the sidewalk efforts. We really haven't done a lot with sidewalks over a bunch of years, and we're starting to get back at that since people are, walking is so near and dear to our, to our residents.
More than ever.
Are there any questions? Any questions for Joe's?
Yes, now we're flipping. Sorry, it'll come to me in a minute. Oh, yes, town aid for roads, we had money withheld from the state in that account. Have they, have they since made restitution and paid what they owe us from the back?
Yeah, they did about a month ago. They did.
Okay, so how much did we get for that, that they withheld?
Well, it's three hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
Okay, and so, it brings me.
I, I didn't hear that, Roseanne.
Roseanne, you're breaking up a little bit, I know you're on the phone, I don't know how that could be possible, but try that again. Roseanne, are you there? We've lost Roseanne. The joys of having, let me see if I can just give her, if we can give her thirty seconds to, to come back on. Joe, obviously, when we cut half a million dollars out of your plan, or four hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of your plan, your road plan is going to shift. So next year, the, you know, the, well, next year, the year after, you'd be putting Dean Road and Grassy Hill Road on there, and obviously, what you're going to do is going to have to shift down a little bit. Comment on that? I mean, obviously, it puts you in a tough bind, you had a good program and a good plan. Economy's really just kicking, kicking our budget around a little bit, and we had to do it this way, but will we survive? And I, and I know Dean Road is not in, in, in a good position. Joe? Or am I? Can you hear me?
I can, can you hear me?
All right.
I'm back.
You are, welcome back in. Joe's frozen, he's at the town hall, and we have horrible wifi there. At least, Joe, if you can hear me, it froze on a fairly decent mugshot of you. Are really in a very awkward place, and it freezes. Joe, Joe probably had to bail out, and will come back as well. I, I, Roseanne, did you get your question answered? You were kind of asking a second question, and you're, you're.
Well, I wanted to know if that money was going to be added to what we're approving tonight, so that he would be able to do more work, or are we going to reserve that money? Or what's the status?
Million sign, of course, and we're hopeful that if you're talking about this town aid road from the state, that would be added in later, if and when we receive that.
Mark, I'm back.
Yeah.
Okay, like, I think he, I think Joe said that we received that money a month ago.
That was for this current fiscal year that we're still in, that ends a couple of weeks, and I.
Okay.
So, yeah, the, the money he received now is being applied, but the, the money for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, the budget that just passed, and will start on July first, that also has town aid road built into the, Joe's plan, and if we receive it, we'll implement it.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Mark, to answer your question, we will get by, I did hear you, I was just frozen. You know, obviously, there's Grassy Hill, if you live up there from Upper Walnut to Monville Line, or Dean Road, you'll know that those roads really need some help, but to, to, to do it right costs so much money that, and, and obviously, with the fiscal times we're in, I need to work with not only the town, but just in general, scale back some of our work, so the bond request wasn't as much as typical years.
Thank you, any other questions on this? Or motion, and it has been seconded, a resolution, I should say, all in favor, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Are there any abstain? Okay, all six of us voted to the affirmative, for the record. The next is the Board of Education, CIP. This is another lengthy resolution, does it need to be read in?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'll be, I'll be reading that into the record when you're ready.
Sorry. But go for it, Dan, if you want to make that motion resolution, and then we can have discussion.
Yeah, so, motion for the resolution making appropriations aggregating two hundred and forty thousand for various boards of education capital improvements, and authorizing issuance of two hundred and forty thousand in bonds of the town to meet said appropriations impending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowing for such purpose. So resolved, section one, the sum of two hundred and forty thousand is hereby appropriated by the town of East Line, Connecticut, for the planning, design, acquisition, and construction of the various board of education capital improvements hereinafter listed, including costs of legal, administrative, and related costs designated the projects. And I'll enumerate the projects. High school HVAC replacements, fifty thousand. High school replaced stairway to playing fields, thirty-three thousand. High school replaced storage tank, thirty-four thousand. Middle school masonry repairs to the archway and main building, forty-seven thousand. Middle school parking lot and front driveway improvements, twenty-six thousand. Middle school HVAC air handler, fifty thousand. The total is two hundred and forty thousand, and those are the estimated amounts. Section two, any of the estimated amounts for a project not required to meet the actual cost of such project may be transferred by the first selectman and the town treasurer to meet the actual cost of any other project. Section three, to meet said appropriations, two hundred and forty thousand dollars, bonds of the town, or so much thereof, as shall be necessary for such purposes, shall be issued, maturing not later than the maximum maturity permitted by the general statutes of Connecticut, revision of nineteen fifty-eight, as amended from time to time, referred to as the Connecticut general statutes. Said bonds may be issued in one or more series, as determined by the first selectman and the town treasurer, and the amount necessary to meet the town's share of the cost of the project determined, determined after considering the estimated amounts of the state and federal grants in aid of the project, or the actual amounts thereof, if this be ascertainable, and the anticipated times of the receipt of the proceeds thereof, provided that the total amount of bonds to be issued shall be not less than the amount which will provide funds sufficient with other funds available for such purpose to pay the principal of and the interest on all temporary borrowings in anticipation of the receipt of the proceeds of said bonds outstanding at the time of the issuance thereof, and to pay for the administration, financing, legal, and other costs of issuance of such bonds. The bonds shall be in the denomination of one thousand dollars, or a whole multiple thereof, be issued in fully registered form, be executed in the name, and on behalf of the town by the facsimile or manual signatures of the first selectman and the town treasurer, bear the town seal or facsimile thereof, be certified by a bank or trust company, which bank or trust company may be designated, and registrar and transfer agent be payable at a bank or trust company, and be approved as to their legality by Robinson and Cole, LLP, attorneys at law of Hartford, Connecticut. The bonds shall be general obligations of the town, and each of the bonds shall recite that every requirement of law relating to its issue has been duly complied with, and that such bond is within every debt and other limit prescribed by law, that the full faith and credit of the town are pledged to the payment of the principal thereof and interest thereon. The aggregate principal amount of the bonds of each series to be issued, the annual installments of principal, redemption provisions, if any, the certifying registrar and transfer agent, and paying agent, the date, time of issue, and the sale of other terms, details, and particulars of such bonds, including the rate or rates of interest, shall be determined by the first selectman and the town treasurer in the best interest of the town, in accordance with Connecticut general statutes. Section four, pursuant, pursuant to executive order, executive order seven S, section seven, adoption of this resolution to finance the projects is necessary to permit the orderly operation of the town, and there is a need to act immediately, and during the duration of the public health and civil preparedness emergency declared by the governor, in order to avoid endangering the public health and welfare, prevent significant financial loss, or is otherwise necessary for the protection of persons and property within the town. Section five, said bonds shall be sold by the first selectman in a competitive offering or by negotiation in his discretion. If sold in a competitive offering, the bonds shall be sold and not less than par, and accrued interest on the basis of the lower, of the lowest net or true interest cost to the town. A notice of sale, or a summary thereof describing the bonds and setting forth the terms, conditions of the sale shall be published at least five days in advance of the sale, and a recognized publication carrying municipal bond notices, and devoted primarily to financial news and the subject of state municipal bonds. If the bonds are sold by negotiation, the purchase agreement shall be approved and signed by the first selectman and the town treasurer. Section six, the town treasurer is authorized to make temporary borrowings in anticipation of the receipt of the proceeds of the bonds. Notes evidencing such borrowings shall be signed by the first selectman and the town treasurer, have the seal of the town affixed, be payable at a bank or trust company designated by the first selectman, be approved as their legality by Robinson and Cole, LLP, attorneys at law of Hartford, Connecticut, and be certified by a bank or trust company designated by the first selectman pursuant to section seven dash three, seven-three of the Connecticut general statutes. They shall be issued with maturity dates which comply with the provisions of the Connecticut general statutes governing the issuance of such notes. The notes shall be, shall be general obligations of the town, and each of the notes shall recite that every requirement of law relating to its issue has been duly complied with, that such note is within every debt and other limit prescribed by law, that the full faith and credit of the town are pledged to the payment of the principal thereof and interest thereon. The net interest cost on such notes, including renewals thereof, and the expense of repairing, issuing, and marketing the notes, to the extent paid from the proceeds of such renewals of said bonds, or said bonds, shall be included as a cost of the project. Upon the sale of the bonds, the proceeds thereof, to the extent required, shall be applied forthwith to the payment of the principal of and the interest on any such notes, then outstanding, or shall be deposited with a bank or trust company in trust for such purpose. Section seven, the town hereby expresses its full official intent pursuant to section one point one five zero dash two of the federal income tax regulation title twenty-six, to reimburse expenditures paid sixty days prior to, and any time after the date of passage of this resolution, in the maximum amount, and for said projects with the proceeds of bonds, notes, or other obligations, referred to as tax exempt obligations, authorized to be issued by the town. The tax exempt obligation shall be, shall be issued to reimburse such expenditures not later than eighteen months after the later of the date of the expenditure or substantial completion of the project, or such later date the regulations may authorize. The town hereby certifies that the intention to reimburse or express herein is based upon its reasonable expectations as of this date. The first selectman or his designate is authorized to pay project expenses in accordance with the resolutions pending the issuance of tax exempt obligation. in accordance with the resolutions pending the issuance of tax exempt obligation. Section eight, the first selectman, director of finance, and the town treasurer are hereby authorized on behalf of the town to enter into agreements or otherwise covenant for the benefit of the bondholders to provide information on an annual or other periodic basis to the Municipal Securities Rulemaking Board, that's the MSRB, and to provide notice to the MSRB of events as enumerated in Securities Exchange Commission Exchange Act Rule 15C-12, as amended as may be necessary, appropriate, or desirable to effect the sale of the bond notes authorized by the resolution. Any agreements or representations to provide information to the MSRB made prior heretofore are hereby confirmed, ratified, and approved. The first selectman, pardon me, section nine, the first selectman and the town treasurer or either of them are hereby authorized on behalf of, on behalf of the town to enter into any other agreements, instruments, documents, and certificates, including tax and investment agreements for the commission of the transactions contemplated by this resolution. That's it.
This is Mark, second.
This is Lorna, second. Thank you, Mr. Cunningham, for reading that resolution, making that resolution, and much appreciated.
It's a life, you know?
Hey, Mark, could I just add, I propose anytime we have legal language like that, we should have a lawyer read it. So I nominate you. It sounded much better.
I thought you guys were my friends.
Oh, my God. Sounded so much better coming from the lawyer.
Wonderful. So Board of Selectmen are here this evening, many of them. Jeff, I know you're here, and Amy I saw, and of course, Mariana. So would you like to speak to this, these, these items?
Happy to. If there's any other questions, hold, let me pull up the document once again. So, real quick, you know, the HVAC replacement, you know, we're at the end of the life, of its life with that, that unit, so that that absolutely needs to be, you know, replaced. We have, let's see, the stairway to the playing fields. Dan, was that one, was that a CNRE or was that one mentioned? That one was mentioned, right? Yeah, those, those, those stairs.
Let's see.
Where is that?
No, that's on.
Yeah, that one was there. Yeah, those stairs are crumbling. They were put in many, many years ago. We think maybe a parent group came together and tore it up and put those in because they were done wrong. And there's a safety factor with those. So they are crumbling. There's loose bricks. There's a, you know, a danger of somebody getting hurt. The domestic hot water storage tank on its last legs and needs to be replaced. The masonry repairs to the archway. No, wait, that was, I think that one was CNRE. I don't think you said that one, Dan, right?
You get the masonry repairs.
Yeah, we got masonry repairs to the archway and main building.
Yeah, so the masonry repairs to the archway at the middle school above, when you first are coming up to the front of the building, there's an individual archway. The bricks above are crumbling from water damage. We're worried a brick or two where somebody's gonna start falling on people's head.
Jeff, did you want me to jump in?
Yeah, Chris Lund's here.
I'm here, Jeff. I've been trying to jump in if you want me to.
Yeah, sure. If you want to jump in, go ahead.
Yeah, so you covered half of them already, but the masonry repairs, the archways in the main building, if you were to go over to the middle school, pull up to any of the main entrances there. Look at those architectural archways, and you can see a lot of brick loosening up, loss of mortar settling, and as Jeff mentioned right at the end there, my concern is that we're gonna start losing pieces of brick. And of course, people stand underneath those waiting for buses or waiting to pick kids up. I already have a contract lined up to do that under state bid. So as soon as we can get that approved for next year, we'll be looking to move that forward. It is a safety issue. Last year, we did some sealing of the parking lot at the middle school, and I'd hate to see that effort go to work. So the next item on, or go to waste, the next item on the list is, is basically the parking lot and front driveway improvements, and that's to finish the work that we started last year, putting a seal code on that. And I can answer any questions about the first couple items as well that Jeff had talked about.
So it's my understanding that because when we're doing appropriations like this, and Jeff, you and I learned something a couple, three years ago when we were doing the air handler at the pool, that the town's purchasing policy will apply to these items. So you mentioned the state bid, and that's what triggered my comment, that of course, state bid supersedes everything if you can get a low state bid. But other, other contracts, other things that you're contracting out for, you know, need three bids and you can't open the problem, obviously. And you're well aware of that, Chris, correct?
Yes.
So Board of Finance might want more details on that or assurances that, you know, again, we're using the power of the purchasing policy of the town, the published one. Are there any questions to the Board of Selectmen on these items? These general maintenance items, really?
Mark, just a comment. I think Jeff and Chris, kudos to you for recognizing some maintenance items. I was actually gonna email you, Jeff, to let you know about those stairs because I've been walking around the schools lately from my house, and they're like pitched wrong. They're dangerous. There's a lawsuit waiting to happen. So I'm glad you're taking care of that, and I don't have to send you an email. Thank you. Yep.
You know, Jeff mentioned, Mr. Newton mentioned parent groups putting things together. And I, you know, hats off to the people that were, that did that. I heard the bleachers are put, you know, like, the original bleachers are put together by students, parents and students. And of course, we do that these days with safety standards and all that goes in, reliability, fire safety and all that. So different era when we were allowed to do those kind of things.
The stairs going up to those fields, Mark, were done probably around 2002. And it was, I don't think the parent group constructed it, but they donated the material and had it done.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
The bleachers, though, right?
The bleachers were done, yeah. Joe Mingo's got great information on that. That's how he also had an electric fence going around the field at one time, too, because something touched the fence and was giving everybody a little low voltage shock at one time.
Wasn't grounded properly, right? It wasn't intentional.
No, it was not intentional. No, no. Basically, it just needed to be grounded, but still.
Prison. Well.
Yeah. I remember the bleachers in the 80s. It was a community effort. We all partnered. I even remember helping.
Any questions about these six items quite detailed? And we, we have Chris here, Jeff, and thank you all for giving that detail. Any other questions? All the resolutions, then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Any abstained? And we'll record a 6-0 vote, a unanimous vote. Thank you all for, for that. We'll move on to 7C on our agenda. There are five items. Do we take them separately, Anna? I think we do, don't we?
Anna Johnson, yes, they're all set up to be approved separately.
Okay, I'll make the first motion for the, as the CAD Records Management. Move to approve a special appropriation in the amount of, this is Kevin Serry. Move to approve a special appropriation in the amount of $170,000 in CNRE Fund 32 as follows. $136,000 from account 32-60-045-100-001, Losip Reserve, Town Clerk, and $34,000 from Eastline Ambulance, subject to Eastline Ambulance adopting its annual budget, to an account to be established titled Computer Aided Dispatch and Records Management System, RMS, and forward to the Board of Finance for approval. The Eastline Ambulance contribution will be credited to revenue account 32-08-800-807, Miscellaneous Revenue Ambulance Association. This project is consistent with the 2020, 2021 Capital Improvement Plan. This resolution is passed under the guidance of Executive Order 7S with no town meeting and being less than 1% of the current budget.
Second.
Motion, that was the second. So, so Sergeant Maisick here, and I think the chief was here. Yeah, chief, well, yeah, chief is here, as Lisa's phone is. Folks, let's talk about what a CAD system is. Oh, David Behr is here from the Eastline Ambulance Association, the Ambulance Fund. We appreciate your attendance as well. Folks, I don't know if you have anything prepared, but could you fill us in what a CAD system is? Why the heck do we have to spend money to replace it?
So the, that's our computer aided dispatch. And the RMS stands for Records Management System. That is every report that is generated, every call generated through the Eastline Dispatch Center goes through that type of system. So all the reports, when we make an arrest, go to court, they're on documents created by that system. It currently is approximately 15 years old. And back, you know, some time ago, it was quasi redundant because we were running that and another system through the state police. But being that it is 15 years old, the company in itself has been sold over three times. This product that we're currently using, which is IMC, is, they're done doing any kind of upgrades to it. So basically, it's just patchwork, and we're spending a lot of time and effort and downtime and constantly relying on Star Computer to come in, excuse me, and fix these issues, you know, especially during a busy day shift. We can't have that system go down. We've had, you know, over the weekend, dispatchers have, you know, either called myself, the chief, maybe in the past when Richard Morris was here to, you know, get authorization to say, call Star in to fix the system because it's now shut down, and they cannot dispatch fire, ambulance, you know, EMS or police to any type of calls. And at that point, we weren't able to generate any calls. So we're kind of stuck with a system that's extremely old and again, is no longer upgradable, just some patch fixes where we do have issues.
Anything to add, chief? David Behr, we did notice that.
Something.
We'll be contributing toward this as well, so we appreciate that. Thank you.
Mark, Sandy's trying to say something but won't speak up loud enough.
I need Sergeant Maisick to take a step back and announce himself in his title, please.
Sergeant Michael Maisick, Eastline Police Department.
And Mark, this is David Behr, President of the Eastline Ambulance Fund. Just to provide an update, that the contribution that the Eastline Ambulance Fund were going to make to this purchase was added as an item in our draft budget. That budget was discussed last night, and it's been approved today. So that is approved in our 2020, 2021 budget.
Well, that's good because I know there was a little bit of a scramble day of you guys getting your approvals, and there's always this difficulty of us coming up with a plan, and you get an approval at the same time. And I appreciate you adjusting your schedule or whatever you need to do to get your approval from your board of directors. Much thanks.
Mark, I have a question.
Yes.
So this is a subscription-based product. Is this going to cost us $170,000 a year?
No, that, that's the total fee for the, for everything, Mark. So basically, what we would be paying annually is the maintenance fee. And currently, right now, the Town of Eastline pays approximately $29,000 annually to IMC for licensing fees, where this new system that we're looking at is greatly reducing that down to an annual fee of $17,000 to $9,000.
Okay. So 17, so it's an upfront cost, $17,000 a year for maintenance to keep everything upgraded, upgradable as we go along.
Correct. Yes, there's some, some parts of that system that are separate that they, you know, they bring into it, such as like the Hunter camera system, which is the cameras that we take pictures of arrestees with. Just so, yeah, basically, their annual maintenance, the net motion fee in there, that's what keeps the vehicles connected wirelessly to the system so officers can run plates and do all that on the road.
Okay, great. Thanks, Hunter.
Any other questions?
Yes, Roseanne, is that annual fee negotiable every year?
No, that's a, that is a set fee. What I have noticed is that the IMC, one that we currently pay, they've been going up annually. So that's gotten more expensive every year. We've had to, if you look at the dispatch budget, we've had to increase that line item annually due to them raising it.
Okay, so this is not, we would expect that this fee might increase.
Based on what I, yeah, based on what I was told from the representatives at Next Gen when we were down there doing a demonstration, and of course, going at length discussing this initial quote was that, no, that annual maintenance fee is the annual maintenance fee. If it, if it does go up in the future, it would be a very nominal amount, very small.
Thank you.
It is typical for these licensing fees to go up. We have them all over town with GIS with, with all sorts of computer programs we have at the town hall and all that. I wouldn't be surprised if there'd be a 2% or a 3% increase annually. But we're starting at a very low number, and that's, that's, that's good to know. That's good to know.
Just one, one other thing, Mark, if I could add real quick.
Yes, Mike Maisick.
So the other thing with this system is because of our current IMC system, it also causes us to have to pay licensing fees to another portion called Blue Link. So we pay also $17,000 a year for that. So if we were to move to this system, I mean, that in itself is $46,000 a year in fees that we pay. We're reducing it from $46,000 a year down to $17,290.
Terrific. I believe your next year's budget reflects those reductions. Am I right? Or have we not captured those yet?
I don't believe we've captured those yet due to where we are at this point.
Yes, this is Chief Nichols. I know, we did not make the adjustment pending this approval.
Got it. Just, just for the record, we wanted to make that note. Okay, and, you know, it's great to hear your little, your little girl, chief.
She wanted to be part of the meeting.
You made her voice debut. Listen, while I have you all, before I call the vote, if there's no other questions, I just want to thank you, the, the police department especially. It's been a difficult week already, and then you, you had a homicide last night that you had to deal with, and, you know, obviously stressful times over there. We appreciate your service. We appreciate your partnership with the community, and I wish for you folks to have better days in the future. Are there any other questions on this item? Okay, I'll call the vote. All in favor of the CAD Record System, $170,000. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay, the next item is C2, which is Eastline Boat Motor. You want to read a motion?
Okay, Kevin Serry, and I'll move to approve, appropriate, and transfer $11,721 from CNRE Fund 32 as follows. $2,068 from account 32-70-300-500-001, Town Aid, Town Project allocations, and $9,653 from account Townwide Projects, to an account to be established titled Police Boat Motor and forward to the Board of Finance for approval. These projects are consistent with the 2020/2021 Capital Improvement Plan. This resolution is passed under the guidance of Executive Order 7S with no town meeting and being less than 1% of the current budget.
This is Mark, second.
Motion's been made, and it's been seconded. This is the Police Department Boat. You want to just give us some details, Sergeant Maisick?
This is, this is the 20-foot maritime skiff that some of you may have seen on a trailer in our, in our parking lot. This is a, you know, shallow water response vessel. We do run it. We do run it in conjunction with the regional asset. Last year, on my way to the Old Blackpoint Fireworks, because they do have us there for marine security to keep everybody out of the secure area. The boat, the motor did catch fire on us as we were starting to pull away from the dock. So we had to call into Nyonic Fire Department to come down to help get that extinguished. And at that point, no officers were injured, myself or the other officer, and we were able to save the asset by getting it put out quickly. But that motor is currently 19 years old, going on 20 years old, an old two-stroke. It's costing us a lot of money in maintenance. And now at the point, you know, operationally, I feel that's just too dangerous to put in the water at this point. Yes.
Right. So to repair the Eastline Boat Motor, any questions? These are, we're paying for all these items under the CNRE resources. And we didn't talk about this at the beginning. What are these CNR resources? How are we paying for these items without going to borrow money or, or, you know, part of a bond package? Why, this is special this year?
Well, so we had a variety of projects within the fund that had been completed and had remaining balances. So we went to the boards, both the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance to reallocate those funds, you know, to a town projects reserve so that we would be able to use them for other projects coming forward.
There any questions on the Boat Motor or the process, leftover CNR resources from other projects? Hearing, seeing none, we'll call the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? We'll record that as a six-zero vote. Next is the Park and Rec Gator for $15,000.
Okay, we'll, we'll have the Gator and the director's vehicle as one motion. So I'll read that. Move to approve a special appropriation and transfer from account 32-70-300-500-100, our project allocations, in the amount of $37,000 to be used as follows. $25,000 for director's vehicles, director's vehicle and $12,000 for Gator, with accounts being established with respective titles and forward to the Board of Finance for approval. These projects are consistent with the 2020-2021 Capital Improvement Plan. This resolution is passed under the guidance of Executive Order 7S with no town meeting and being less than 1% of the current budget.
Paul Daigle, second.
We have a motion and seconded. Any comments? Any questions? Dave, do you want to just recap how you use this vehicle? And of course, there's your vehicle that's been around forever and I've seen the inside of it. It's, it's time for you, for the director to have another vehicle. You're all over town all the time. But talk to us about the Gator. Let me unmute you.
You got me? You got me?
Gotcha.
All right. So the Gator, the Gator is a utility style vehicle that we will use at McCook and in our athletic fields throughout the, throughout town. It is not in replace, but we do have an older model, 2007, that has over 1,000 miles, excuse me, 1,000 hours on the motor. And this is something that our park patrol uses at the park during the summer months. And then our maintenance crew uses it also during the summer and on our athletic fields as well. So this something's been in the capital improvement budget for quite some time. And it's time that, it's a good time for us to move forward with it. And then my vehicle is a 2006 Ford Escape with almost 100,000, I think 95,000 miles on it and is certainly at the end of its life. So if you have any questions, we'd be more than happy to answer those.
Joe, Joe, do, do we have any plans for the, for the Parks and Rec vehicle? Is it worth keeping or are we going to sell that out into auction?
Sell it.
I agree.
If you get anything for us.
Rock metal.
Yeah. Okay. Any questions from the Board of Selectmen? We'll be using, we'll be using the purchasing policy on these items. And I think it was noted in your packet that we've already received a more competitive bid through the co-op bid process, the Sourcewell co-op bid for the, knocking it down to 11.5 instead of, am I correct, Anna? Am I reading that right?
Yes, you are.
Great. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Are there any abstentions? Okay, I'll record that as a six-zero vote. Thank you. Thank you all for that. I couldn't figure out why the Board of Ed was sticking around. Now I figured it out. This is a special appropriation for the fiscal year 2021 for the Board of Ed, CIP, Learn.
Move the following. Move to approve a special appropriation in the amount of $110,000 to be used as follows. $85,000 for town hall HVAC system and $25,000 for town hall drop. I skipped one, I'm sorry. Let's go back up to BOE projects. Move through, and this is Kevin Siri, move to approve a special appropriation in the amount of $35,500 to be used as follows. $25,100 for Eastline High School Energy Saving Initiatives and $10,400 for Eastline Middle School Building Envelope Study with the source of funds being learned rental income with accounts being established respectively. These projects are consistent with the 2020-2021 Capital Improvement Plan. The resolution is passed under the guidance of Executive Order 7S with no town meeting and being less than 1% of the current budget.
Okay.
This is Mark, second.
It's been seconded by Mr. Salerna. There any questions, comments? I know, Chris, you're still here, Chris Land. Everybody from the Board of Ed is still here, but do you want to just go and kind of go over very, very briefly? We understand what you're doing here and you're using learn money. Is that? Yeah.
Yep.
You know, funds from your account. So you're using it to maintain and upgrade your building, I guess.
So very briefly, I engaged with the Everstore's vendor that does their energy audits. They conducted one for us. Still waiting to get the results back. And that could be very helpful for us because we may get a lot of new energy saving devices and lights and whatnot. It basically costs to us. But I did have some money in there, proceed money in case there are certain things that aren't covered within those audits. Sometimes there are things that just can't be upgraded or they don't give you any money back through that. So that's a little bit of seed money, but hopefully we're going to be more or less cost neutral and over time that'll save for us. And then the second thing, over at the middle school, again, a lot of masonry issues there, not just the archways out front, but the building proper itself. You could see some affluorescence, which is that white pasty, hard pasty substance on the walls that occurs when the water leaches the paste out of the, between the brick and the part of brickwork. So there's some issues there. Want to get a study done, do some destructive testing where we'll pull bricks out and look behind them and replace the bricks and, and whatnot. So the cost is there to do a full evaluation of the building to see what may be going on that we should be concerned about and also what we can do to arrest it. Hopefully, you know, if there's anything, it's minor, maybe just seal code it, the whole building in the future. But that's what that money's there for.
That's great. Chris, I don't know if you've ever been introduced to the Board of Selectmen. My apology, that should have been done before you spoke. You are the, what is your title?
Facilities Director for the Board of Education.
Yeah, the Board of Ed found a, found a winner in you and someone to look over our facilities and, and have a long range plan, much like Joe does in our, in our town controlled facilities. Thank you, Chris, for your service to our town and for your, you know, for aging your professionalism in our town and making our buildings better for the next generation of students.
Thanks. It's been a pleasure working with Joe and his staff.
Yes. And you guys working together is the key to the success. So good for you guys. Are there any questions on this item? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any abstain? All right. The ayes have it. It would be a six-zero vote. I, before I move on, we are getting lightning strikes, at least on my side of town, and in rolling thunder. Sometimes that could be far off. I don't know. But if by chance we lose power and we go down, we'll meet on the half hour. You know, if we lose electricity, maybe we'll come back on quickly. We'll meet on the half hour up until 9:30. And then we would just have to, if power doesn't come on for, you know, to, to, to reach a quorum, then we, I'm making this up as I go along. Who would have thought that we'd have to have these kind of rules? But we're on Zoom, right? So if the power goes down, we'll, we'll, you know, if it went down right now, we'd try again at nine and then try again at 9:30. If we haven't been able to connect by then, everybody go to bed and we'll have to reschedule a special meeting to finish this stuff up later in the week. And we'll let the record show that, okay? All right. So if anything goes down, maybe the top of the hour or the bottom of the hour, up until nine and through 9:30. Okay?
There's a lot of red coming.
Yeah, yeah. So maybe we can, this special appropriation of the LoSiP Fund, $110,000.
Okay, this is Kevin Siri, move to approve a special appropriation in the amount of $110,000 to be used as follows. $85,000 for town hall HVAC system and $25,000 for town hall drop ceilings with the source of funds being the LoSiP program and accounts to be established titled with the state project number and forward to the Board of Finance for approval. These projects are consistent with the 2020/2021 Capital Improvement Plan. The resolution is passed under the guidance of Executive Order 7S with no town meeting and being less than 1% of the current budget.
This is Mark, second.
Okay, we have a motion second. Joe, you've put this together. We need the air handlers, that we're calling it, and the drop ceilings. If you've, you've been to the town hall, the ceilings are those, that we need a new ceiling. It's falling apart. It looks awful. So it's, we can do this with state funds and are there any questions? Hearing, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain? The ayes have it with a six-zero vote. There's a number of fiscal year transfers. It's toward the end of every year. As we run tight budgets, we tend to get right down to the zero sometimes. And sometimes we're, we're under that number and we have money somewhere else. So we're transferring some funds around. You, you were given this in your packet. It was part of your agenda.
This is Kevin Siri. I'll move to ratified departmental transfers in the amount of $41,600, $41,605.46 processed for fiscal year end June 30, 2020 and to forward to the Board of Finance for approval.
Paul Daigle, second.
Motion and second. Any questions or comments? You've got the detail. It was in your packet. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Are there any abstain? So the ayes have it, six-zero for the record. Next on the agendas is the special, and lastly, under New Business, special appropriations of the Board of Finance Secretary. They've had some very lengthy meetings at the Board of Finance and we need to move some money over there.
Okay, this is Kevin Siri. I'll move to appropriate and transfer $1,000 from account 01-01-120-200-500 contingency to account 01-01-126-100-413, hard time clerical recording secretary, Board of Finance and forward to the Board of Finance for approval.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any abstain? The ayes have it. It was kind of a simple item. Ex officio reports, this has been very difficult to, you know, engage in our ex officio meetings that are going on by Zoom. We're doing our best as Selectmen to, to, to go when we can and to plug in. Are there any ex officio reports? Kevin, I'll start with you because you're in my order here.
Yeah. No, I'm bored of, Parks and Recs haven't met, but so far I haven't heard any concerns from Dave or anybody there regarding overcrowding at the beaches or anything like that. No, no problem. So everything from what I've seen and heard is going well at the beaches. The one thing they did do is every year, we go out for bid for, Parks and Rec was out for a bid for a vendor to come in and sell the ice cream and water. It's always been the same person, Mr. Bowers. And because of this type of year, they reduced the minimum amount, the, the, the amount, the minimum bid that would be required. And again, he was the only one that submitted it. So it's been approved. That, that's it. That's my report.
Okay, Mr. Daigle, anything?
Nothing for as far as meetings since our last meeting. Would you like me to talk about the plan moving forward for public safety building? Or do you want to address that?
You, um, go ahead.
Okay. Right now, we're working on a presentation to be made at our next scheduled meeting on the 17th, where the Public Safety Vision Committee and Silver Petrocelli Architectural Firm will make a presentation on the unanimously endorsed proposal by the Vision Committee to refurbish the Honeywell Building in the total cost, a total amount of $7.18 million. That is $1.18 million above what we, the Board of Selectmen approved last year. And it's $2 million above, $2.18 million above what the Board of Finance approved and what the, was approved at town referendum. Mark has gotten some legal advice that, direction regarding there will be a referendum held if and when we and the Board of Finance approve a final plan and dollar amount to execute the renovations. The bid that we, low bid that we selected is good for 120 days from, and I always forget this date. It was April something.
April 23rd.
Yeah, it was a Friday, I believe. Yep. So we do have a little bit of time, but the contractor is eager to start, but of course, cannot start until we appropriate the amount of funds. And then we actually place the contract because we have not placed the contract, of course, with the contractor at this time. So we're, we're there. We've got the last legs of the race to run. We'll be prepared to justify the process we used, what we did and didn't include in the, in the final recommendation. And we'll be open to questions by members of the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance as well. So if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. If not, that's the end of my report.
Just semantics, I'll clean it up, that we're going to recommend to the Board of Selectmen that we vote to go directly to a referendum. It's not required and it's not, you know, we're not going to wait for a petition, but because we can't have a town meeting, we'll go to the Board of Selectmen, it then moves to the Board of Finance. They'll have a 30-day window of time and no more than that to make a decision on the Vision Committee's proposal. It will go back to the Board of Selectmen for the scheduling, a possible so scheduling and your vote to move directly to a referendum, which would at that date be no earlier than seven days, but later than 14 days by charter. And I'm already working with the registrars and lining that up. We're hoping to have it after the July 20th date, which is when the state, we think, but of course, things have been very fluid coming out of Hartford, but we think by July 20th, the government is going to open up more opportunities for more people and buildings and all that. We don't want to do this outside. We don't want to do a referendum and have a line that goes down the parking lot and into the street because we can only allow five people or 10 people in a building at any one time. And so we want to be, you know, we want a fair vote and a, of course, an easy vote for the voters. We are very used to our, our registrars conducting very, very good elections in our town. Where people move through the lines and all that, and we wouldn't want this to be any different. So the scheduling is, is, is very difficult. Anytime we do one of these things, we were looking at doing it this coming Monday for the special meeting. I was going to ask you all to be available this coming Monday, but we have, the bond council needs to have the bond resolutions prepared and they have a bunch of due diligence that they need to do in preparing a bond resolution. So we backed off off on that and said, let's just do it on a regular meeting on June seventeenth. Rain's really coming down here now.
Oh, yeah.
So that's that. Thank you, Paul, very much for all of your work on that. And we look forward to hearing that at our next regular meeting, which will be fourteen days from today. Mr. Salerno, any ex officio reports?
Building Matt, nothing to report there. Library doesn't meet till July and Planning has an application coming before them, so they have not met since the start it, so they will be meeting, I believe, this month. There's going to be something scheduled, so I'll keep you posted on that.
Library is operating now with a curbside pickup.
Curbside pickup.
So that's kind of, that's kind of cool. I guess it's working out for them, so happy to hear about that.
Yeah.
Mr. Cunningham?
Nothing to report. None of my committees have had a chance to meet yet successfully. Tried the other night with Zoom meeting, but it didn't quite work out, I guess, so.
Got it. Do you watch over WellsCo, Dan or?
Yeah, I think they're trying to schedule something.
Tomorrow.
For this week, yeah, tomorrow, so.
Tomorrow at four o'clock. I think I have to be there because I am the Zoom host. I might be able to give it over to somebody in the meeting, like Peter Harris, and then depart.
Yeah.
But if you need, if you need the Zoom thing, just let me know.
I'll let you know. I may be joining a little bit late, but I will jump to, try and jump in.
Great. Who am I missing? Roseanne?
Good evening. I'd like to ask Mr. Dagle if the committee has any plans for getting out any kind of informational brochures for the public that could be available at certain pickup points or something that perhaps could be put on online?
The cost breakdown for the project is in our last meeting minutes, which is on the, are they published on the town website, Mark?
Yeah, but we'll put together a package with the, and we'll do that prior to the Board of Selectmen meeting, which will be the layout of the building, the cost points that Mr. Dagle just talked about, and details of what we'll be doing in the building and setting this up for future generations.
So that'll be presented at our next meeting and that can be also published online as well.
And we'll do that as well.
I would like to see some information about the cost of previous proposals and also perhaps some of the things that we discussed about doing before we arrived at this decision. So the public is aware that we looked at other potential alternatives in the past two or three years that just, just didn't prove to be viable. And I think that that would be helpful in easing some of the concerns from people, from many people who've spoken to me and asked additional information.
Yeah, we'll get that out there, Roseanne. I think that's a good point. So we'll leave that on the town website and then start pushing it. And I'm sure people will pick it up and start moving around social media as well. There's nothing to hide. The Board of, well, the Vision Committee stands very proud of the work that they did and are very confident that what they will present to you, that was approved unanimously, is the right plan for the town. But you're absolutely right. We have to remember that not everybody was around, what was it, eighteen years ago with the first police building from Port Hill? And was it twelve? I'm sure it was even more than that, fourteen years ago with the, proposed the new building down across Bridebrook. People don't realize the cost of a new building and now that goes on with that in the history.
And some of the things, some of the things in the intermediate time that we've considered that just, just did not prove to be viable, but we looked at them as potential opportunities.
Including the cars in the station.
Yeah, so I would, I'd be happy to help somebody pull that together or a couple of people that we could keep simple and just have as a handout, perhaps at various places around town that people frequent.
Yeah, yeah, it's so difficult now, isn't it? But yeah, maybe we can find spots to do that. For sure. We'll definitely make it available electronically, online, and if by request, we can mail them out, I suppose, from my office. Good, good point. I mean, I'd welcome your input and your help, Roseanne. Maybe if we get into next week, while we'll be, we have the Town Hall open for, for, by appointment only, but that of course, and women. So by all means, if you're feeling up to it, we can have you come in. I can have a one-on-one or Mr. Dagle can join us, or members of the Vision Committee too. So yeah, I'd welcome.
And initially, Roseanne, the presentation will have some recent examples of renovation projects at other police stations for comparison standpoints, a cost, and it will also have an estimate to build a new building, including a nominal land cost, because we don't know where the land would be. It doesn't include outfitting the building, but at least shows you what the new construction cost would be compared to what the Vision Committee is recommending.
Yep. Okay, that would be, I think that would be very helpful for people to arrive at some decision that over the past fifteen years, we've looked at a lot of different potentials that just haven't, haven't been workable.
Yeah.
Right.
There's no doubt about it that this is the most economical option that was available to the town, and we'll stand by that, that this is a good deal for the town. And our, and our architects will also go and represent that, and they work projects all over the state.
Well, I think also another thing to put out there for the public is what happens if this isn't approved? What's the, what's the alternative?
Yeah, it's dangerous. Yes, I agree with you, and it's been part of our conversation, was certainly part of our public meetings in the auditorium last year. It is dangerous to talk about that because I don't want to, I don't want to threaten. I don't want to.
I don't think that it should be done in a threatening manner, but I think the fact is that we don't have.
We don't have another, other than, if you don't approve this, we're going to go and build a fifteen million dollar building, or, or our police will be operating out of trailers in a parking lot somewhere while we scramble to find an alternative. Yes, so I, we'll bring up all that and again, rehash a lot of the information that came out a couple of years ago, when not everybody was tuned in. We had roughly twenty-two hundred people vote a year and a half, lovely year ago, at the referendum and approved it on a two to one ratio nearly. So we'll, we'll see, we'll get the information out again. You're absolutely right, Roseanne. We need to start all over again and do a public, public service announcement.
Yep.
And we welcome your help on that.
Okay.
I, for my Selectmen's report, you know, it's business as usual. Right now, we are looking, we are monitoring what other towns are doing as far as their town buildings and when it might be appropriate to open up our town buildings. Right now, we will do it by appointment only. If someone, we are having some meetings with some members of the public to come in. We're wearing masks. We have sneeze shields in all the offices. We're ready for the public to come in, but of course, it's, there's still this, this safety thing that we're being very cautious on. If it starts into our, if something gets into our building, we're just very, very concerned with that will do to town services. And heck, we don't want to open up the police station for random people walking in because if someone brings in with them, again, we've been so lucky so far to not have any cases within our first responders. Losing my voice. As the nation grieves over George Floyd and all that is going on with that and so many other victims, I know our town, again, prays for peace. There is a vigil coming up this weekend. I'm a little concerned about its location and the number of people that will are planning on coming. We're not allowed to have more than twenty-five people at a gathering. If it's a church gathering, it can be a hundred people. If it's a high school graduation, it can be no more than a hundred and fifty people. But if it's a beach, it can be a thousand people. So the direction we're getting from the state isn't necessarily concise and steady. So there's been a lot of complaints among the CEOs of the towns about inconsistencies and we're begging for more consistency as we start rolling this out, coming out of this and praying that another wave doesn't come. I've been, I met with the police chief a couple of times in the last week about the events that occurred up in Minneapolis, I believe, and around the country. And we talked about, you know, what could happen in our, in our community as far as peaceful protests turning into something other than peaceful and, you know, what we might need to do to prepare for that. We also talked about police procedures, SOP procedures, and the Board of the Police Commission will be reviewing that at their next Police Commission meeting, beginning a full report. You may want to tune in on that. But of course, we do everything we can as a community to make sure we're partners in the community and respecting everybody that we encounter. The police did have a fatal today. They had to investigate late last night. There was a, there was a body found near the highway exit at exit seventy-three, probably a dumped body. There was a young twenty-three-year-old male from, I believe, Bridgeport was what I saw. And, you know, our hearts and prayers go out to the family and I'm so sorry. And I'm so sorry, again, I mentioned the meeting earlier, that our police have had a heck of a week already, and this is a major deal for them to go through this. Lastly, you know, there are some changes going on with high school graduation rules, but from what I saw from the governor's office, I wasn't impressed. It could be before July seventh. Of course, school's over much earlier than that, and graduation day is much earlier than that. There's a question about whether the schools have any jurisdiction over the children, of students past the graduation date. And they don't. Once they graduated, they've forgotten, there's already official graduation day. So I don't know about this July seventh, it would just be a ceremony in name only. But, but there's limitations on the amount of people. What we are doing is, as a town, we're supporting the seniors having a parade. It'll be vehicle parade where they stay in their cars and we go from the high school down Flanders Road, cut into Industrial Park Road. It's Stop and Shop where there's plenty of room and it's quiet on a Sunday afternoon. And, you know, parents can line up on either side of the road and stay in their cars and honk the horns, wave and balloons and at least a little bit of something, a little bit of celebration there. And they are doing a graduation ceremony by video where they're videotaping, currently the plan is anyway, this could change. They're going to videotape the kids walking across the stage and receiving their diploma, and then condense that video to as quick, you know, it's a forty-minute video, and then play that and people see that in unison, whether they all come to the parking lot and watch it on their devices or watch it at prescribe time at home. I don't know, but they're going to try to do something. But the bottom line is it's a bummer for any college or high school graduate. Heck, the middle school, the middle school picnic, which is one of the, like, kind of like the coolest thing, that everyone just gets out there and puts long chairs out and for the middle school graduation. Of course, that was canceled this year as well. So disappointing that so many events are being canceled, but so many momentous occasions in young persons' lives are being postponed or canceled. So that's what it is. We canceled Celebrate East Line, as you know, we didn't have the Memorial Day Parade or the, we had a very small vigil, less than twenty-five people. It was just the veterans groups, myself and a few other citizens. And it was, they just felt that they needed to do something, and I'm glad that they did, and I was honored to be there. Is there anything else in the Board of Selectmen?
I just have a public service announcement. SCARA, their collection of shredded materials and hazardous waste, they are conducting it in Colchester on this Saturday. So for anybody that missed out on the first couple that were canceled, just to point out that they are going to have that.
We're going to do it in this town too, and it's coming up. And Joe is working on a date, but that's a good public service announcement as well. So I've muted all participants. If they wish to be unmuted, I think they just hit the unmute button, because we go to public comment. Are there any public comments this evening? Anybody from the public? And hearing and seeing none, they're unmuted and nobody's responded. I can take a motion adjourn.
This Kevin Searle, I'll move to adjourn.
I'll second. That's Dan.
All in favor, say aye.
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 I'm always available, folks, so call anytime and stay safe out there. We'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.